All right, we'll go ahead and start our meeting. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular study session and business meeting for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. The time right now is 7:04 PM. We're starting the meeting just a little bit late as we were just honoring our boards and commission members for the work that they've done over the last year. And so we are now looking at the call to order and I'm going to ask that Clerk Wykoff, please go ahead and call the roll. And I'm going to activate your microphone, sorry. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present and establishing a form are councilmembers Foulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And at an earlier meeting, Councilmember Gamble had mentioned that he would not be here this evening, so unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Saying no objection, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be the Pledge of Allegiance with Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Scarborough, will you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Next item that we have on the agenda tonight is under item four. This is 4.1, Snohomish County Health District with Nicole Thompson. Good evening, and let me go ahead and activate your microphone. There we go. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, I felt got my pre-introduction in at the at the welcome today. Um, so hi, councilmembers. Nicole Thompson with the Snohomish Health District. I am the interim government and public affairs manager there. Um, tonight's presentation, I, you know, I didn't ask, I assume you guys all have the slides I be sent the packer, so I think you.
They're also displaying up above.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so tonight's presentation, we come to visit all of our local cities at least twice a year, maybe more depending on your requests. And so this is our fall presentation to you all. Normally, we like to do a more of an in-depth look across what are some particularly focused issues that have been happening in public health over the last year. For many of you, it may have been COVID, COVID and COVID. But this year, we're going to take a little bit of a different approach and talk to you a little bit around what is the broader scope of public health. We're finding that a lot of our cities and our residents aren't always, you know, we've been so COVID-y for so long that the broader breadth of what services we provide to the to the county and our cities is not well-known and so. So this is our, I don't know, I call it our cool graphic. I don't really have any other way to describe it, but really, public health is made up of three main silos, if you will, with your administration sort of overarching. And then we are led by our Board of Health. And our Board of Health is a dual-headed organization. It's both our Board of Directors as well as our policymaking body. And we're going to go through each one of these program areas, both side a little bit, so that you can get a flavor of what goes in there. Most everybody, you know, in my experience, think of the Health District or the Health Department as being, you know, that you're the inspector that comes through. And yes, that might be part of what we do, but there's also a large, larger breadth of activities that we do. So we'll take some time and go through each one of those. Next. So to start, we'll do the environmental health programs. Environmental health in Snohomish County is broken up into four different basic areas, food safety, land use and safe environments. And within that, I'm just going to start with our food safety team. This is the one people usually think of as the rest, the inspector, restaurant inspector. And for the city of Monroe, you have 177 restaurants that are permitted here, totaling over almost close to 200 inspections that have been performed this year. That includes not just permits for inspections for the restaurants, but also complaint responses and permit renewal slash new construction. So we come out and we visit businesses to see their meeting health codes. In our safe environments section, we do things associated with pools is probably the biggest one people know about. So is the water that you're swimming in publicly going to hurt you or not? It's kind of the the sum of that. Are there life rings available? Are there lifeguards if needed to be there? And then we also do in our land use department, those are your septic permits and septic use and septic complaints. So if you have a failing septic, septic drainage into our bodies of water, things like that, that is what we sort of focus in on. In that land use program, we also do solid waste complaints as well as schools and camps. So you might find folks that are there for that. Um, we have responded to 10 septic complaints and 10 solid waste complaints this far in the city. So we are definitely out and about. In environmental health, in addition to those, we called this out separately, is our customer service program. Our customer service program is that program when you come into our building, if you've been to the wrecker building in downtown Everett, it's kind of that landing pad where most of our residents come in to get a body of service. If they can't figure out what they want to do on the website, or there's not a link on the website, they might come visit us in office and it's our customer service folks that deal with all of those topics. The largest breadth of areas that we cover are really vital statistics. So people who are needing birth certificates and death certificates come in. We've worked really hard this past year and a half to automate that process. So there are now kiosks when you come into the building where folks do not even need to talk to anybody, which I think is super helpful. Because the line can get can get long and we we want to be customer service oriented. We also handle all of the plans and things like that. So if somebody's coming in wanting to open a new restaurant, they'd like a consultation. They come in and they see your front desk staff. How do I fill in the blank? How do I get a food permit? How do I get a food handler's card? How do I just go on down the line? So and then that's also where all of our complaints go. So for example, I ate at fill-in-the-blank restaurant and then I vomited the next day. I think they got a problem. Can you come check them out? They are the folks that answer a large proportion of those phone calls and get those complaints to the appropriate inspector for that area. Perfect, thank you. So on to the next bubble, if you will, the next silo of our work. So environmental health is one of the big ones. And then prevention services is sort of the next big bucket. Within that bucket, I I like to distinguish environmental health from prevention services by environmental health are those things that we expect to be quote unquote clean when we use them as the public, right? We go into a restaurant, we expect our restaurant not to make us sick. When we go into a swimming pool, there's invisible bacteria and other things there that'll get you. But we don't know as residents, when we walk into these places, how to evaluate them. Prevention Services is a little bit of the flip of that. Prevention Services covers a lot of the the a lot of the program areas that you might think of as being personal choices, right? Unprotected sex, choices to use tobacco, not to use tobacco, choices to utilize drugs or not, right? Do we use a mask to cover our faces when we're sick? How are we helping integrate and work with our families and communities, right? Things that we might need resources and tools to help us learn about resources and choices that are ahead of us and in front of us. So to fill that out, there we do a lot of things around health screenings, injury prevention, fall prevention, childcare outreach and childcare resources. So we work with your local child cares to say, hey, what are some health issues that you might be having? How can we help you meet your regulatory requirements with your state licenser? How can we provide you resources for your families that might be asking questions about? My daughter had hand, foot and mouth when she was in daycare. So how do we help their staff and their nurses provide tools and feedback to the parents and whatnot? Hepatitis is on the rise, so we work with that in there. We also work with families who have been experienced and diagnosed with tuberculosis. We administer medicines to them and help them achieve medical clearance. And let's see, well, I can't have a presentation without monkeypox because that's now here as well as the flu. So we've got and then the our health officer talks about what's called the trifecta. So there's COVID, the flu and RSV in our kids right now. Prevention and outreach activities for that all pretty much happen through the prevention services as an example. And then all the amazing data that you have received over the last couple of years on the pandemic, even a lot of the numbers that you're seeing tonight all come out of prevention services in our epidemiology department. So. But not all of our prevention work focuses on diseases. That's where you get the childcare health program and things like that as well. And then we have our administration program that is, you know, I feel like every organization needs to have administration. And this is sort of where you'll find all of our human resources, budgets, contracts, communications, all those basic or umbrella opportunities that are there for the entire district. And I want to call out the picture of Dr. James Lewis up there. We are having a lot of staff changes, a lot of changes in general, coming to your to local health this year. And so Dr. Lewis is actually the first of those many changes that have happened. So are you may be familiar with Dr. Chris Spitters. He's been our health officer that's been with us for a number of years and he has been on media and talking about COVID all over the place. He has taken a very needed retirement and time away to recover and recoup. And he's been in the public health field for gosh, probably close to 30 years as a health officer. And so we are pleased to welcome Dr. James Lewis. He started in August as our new health officer for the for the county. And you will likely be seeing him pop up in lots of press releases and whatnot, and perhaps even coming to meet you at some point. He comes from King County in North Carolina and has a broad, broad focus and emphasis in his practice as well as his skill set. And then the big one, I think a lot of, it's definitely for us, a really big one, is we are transitioning. Many of you may know that we are a health district and I introduced myself as being a health district. As of January 1st, we will become a Department of Snohomish County Government. So you'll have transportation, parks, whatnot, human services and public health. So we'll be now a Department of the County Government. Lot of transition happening with that. All 240 of us, sorry, 140 of us employees will become county employees. And there's a lot of focus groups happening right now to support that transition. So stay tuned to hear more about that. There are newsletters that are being produced. I think the biggest thing from a communication standpoint is to really, we have asked and hand out a lot of documentation to our local cities and our constituents about how to get ahold of us. A lot of that is going to be changing. So if in the near future, in the next few months, if you have some of those documents, we're just asking you to gently recycle them and we'll have all new logo branded items that are coming your way. But we are not moving buildings and we are not, shouldn't be changing our phone numbers. So all of those items that you have been using in the past should still be available and working for you as well as our services. Our services will not be changing. In fact, we are actually hoping that they will both deepen and expand for all of our residents. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we will know more about that after the merge happens. And then the next slide we have is really speaking about our governance structure. So currently, we have a Board of Health. Our Board of Health is 15 members and this is a dual-headed board. So it's both a Board of Directors that deals with budget and policy. And then we have our public health policy in in one place. The board is made up of, like I said, 15 members. There are five county council districts. So each county council member is an automatic member of our Board of Health. And then within each one of those five county council districts, you have a member from the largest cities, city council by by population. And then for the remainder of the small cities that are incorporated within that district, the small cities work together to decide who is going to be the representative for the small cities in total for that district. So for you, your your district rep is Joseph Hunt from Sultan. And it can rotate around. So stay tuned. This Board of Health will be changing as of the first of the year when we have our new burnout department. That means we are also standing up a new Board of Health. So and I do not actually have information about what that will look. There's still conversations about how that will unfolds and the representatives who will be selected to be on that Board of Health, but that will be changing. The Board of Health is also authorized to advisory councils and boards to help advise them. One is our Public Health Advisory Council and our Community Equity Advisory Board. Our Community Equity Advisory Board is as it is stated. We have between 17 and 21 members on that board. We do have several vacancies. So folks are interested. Highly recommend checking out our website on that as well as our Public Health Advisory Council. We have several vacancies in specific sectors related to that as well, and they both meet monthly. And their purpose is to guide and look at and help assist our Board of Health as they're making public health-based decisions, not the governance side of the of the picture. And then before we wrap up here, I want to extend a gratitude and thanks to all of our community members and all of our our local elected really. One of the tasks under my shop also includes public events and communications. And so we are out there trying to attend as many public events as we can specifically during the summer so that people know that we do serve all of our residents within the within our county. And so we have been to back-to-school nights, the Evergreen State Fair, health fairs, you kind of name it, senior service centers. We have been everywhere if we kind of know about them and we can work them into the schedule, we like to come. And we also have an online portal. So if you would like to have us present at any of your events, just put your request in there and someone from our staff will reach out to you to coordinate that event. How many time, place, all those good things? And then we can come support and be present. And we have cool giveaways and doodads and coloring books for the kids and whatnot. And that is all I have today for you and I am open for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments this evening for our health district soon to become a health department?
Yeah, you're welcome. And I would be remiss if I didn't say wash your hands, wash your hands and wash your hands. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda and that item would be public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi-judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking this evening to the council, please go ahead and raise your hand if you're here in the audience. And if you're online, please go ahead and hit star nine if you're on the phone or hit your raise hand icon in the middle of your Zoom screen. All right, saying no hands in the audience or online, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that item would be item six, specifically the consent agenda. And I turn to the council. All right, Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Davis to approve the consent agenda, which is in the packet. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business and we'll start with item 7.1, Economic Development Advisory Board EDAB appointment. And I will turn to Mr. Heebner. Mr. Heebner, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, sir. Good evening, councilmembers. Before you is the mayor's appointment of Kimberly Lynn Howerton to the Economic Development Advisory Board, position two, a vacant seat with a term ending December 31, 2024. The EDAB was originally established in 2018 and at that time was scheduled to terminate on December 31, 2022. The council approved resolution number 2022-013 in July, which extended, which repealed the previous resolution, established updated standards and procedures for the EDAB and extended it through December 31, 2026. The EDAB had two vacancies due to resignations effective December 21 of 2021 and July 12 of this year. Kimberly has applied for one of the openings on the EDAB. She is the owner of the Monroe branch of the Fairway Mortgage Company and has been active in her industry and in the community for a number of years. Mayor Thomas interviewed Kimberly on October 25th last week. Myself and Tyler Christian, who will be taking over as the staff liaison for the EDAB on Monday, both attended that interview. And Mayor Thomas, following that interview, has appointed Kimberly to position two, again with a term ending December 31, 2024. Kimberly is here this evening and Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. I turn it back to you and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to invite Kimberly Lynn Howerton to come forward to the podium, please, to introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Lynn Howerton and I have the Fairway Mortgage. I've been here for 12 years on Main Street and been in lending for 30 years. And this downtown Main Street location was kind of a dream to have a boutique type office in a small town. So it's taken me a little bit to get here to where I was staffed into the place where I could go out into the community and start being a bigger resource. And now at that time and where we're at in our industry, that time is done. So I was excited that Deborah invited me to apply and I'm looking forward to helping. And on the heels of a very big title company symposium today with all of the growth that's heading out in to the east, I just think this time is a perfect time with housing development to start seeing what kind of development we can bring to Monroe.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the appointee? All right, saying none, councilmembers, is there a motion? I turn to Councilmember Kenny. Go ahead.
To confirm the mayor's appointment of Kimberly Lynn Howerton to the Economic Development Advisory Board EDAB, position two, a vacant seat with a term ending December 31, 2024.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action in new business item number 7.1. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes 6-0. Congratulations, Board Member Lynn Howerton. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda and that next item will be new business item 7.2, the 2022-2023 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee LTAC appointments. And I'll turn again to to Mr. Heebner. Mr. Heebner, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you this evening are three requested actions to confirm the mayor's appointments of Councilmember Heather Foulter to the position of Chair of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The appointments of Gina Casa Grande and Connie Goss as tourism industry members and the mayor's reappointment of Anita Galvin as as lodging, excuse me, as lodging business member, all with terms ending June 30, 2023. The state law RCW 6728, 1817 establishes the parameters for membership on a lodging tax advisory committee, which requires the an elected official as chair and at least two representatives from the lodging industry. Those could be hoteliers or short-term rental properties and at least two members that are eligible recipients of Lodging Tax Advisory Committee funds. So there's some background in the packet related to the history of the LTAC established in that state law is that terms for LTAC members are to be reviewed annually. And so that is the reason for the appointments before you this evening. Mayor Thomas has interviewed each of the appointed members. Connie is with us this evening here in the chambers. Gina Casa Grande is with us online. Member Galvin was not able to be here this evening, but Mayor Thomas interviewed her yesterday and is happy to move forward with her reappointment. So again, four nominees with three requested actions before you this evening. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report on this item. Turn it back to you and again, available for any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to go and I'm now going to cycle through each of the appointees. We'll start off with Councilmember Foulter. Would you like to say a few words about to introduce yourself? I don't think you need to introduce yourself, but certainly, do you have any words you'd like to share?
Yes, I was happy to do this last year and I'm looking forward to doing it again. I was one of those nerds who actually went to the LTAC meetings long before they were cool. So happy to serve again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I'll entertain entertain a motion for the first requested action if there is a motion at this time. Is is there a second? It'd probably be better if you read the motion. Go ahead, Councilmember Davis.
I'll move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Councilmember Heather Foulter to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as an elected official member, Chair with a term ending 6/30/2023.
The motion from Councilmember Davis, second from Councilmember Hanford for the requested action number one in new business item 7.2. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes 6-0. Congratulations, Board Member Foulter. We're going to move now to the second requested motion. I'll start off with inviting Gina Casa Grande, who's being appointed to position number three, subject to your confirmation. And Gina, would you like to say a few words, just introduce yourself and express your interest in serving on the committee, on the board?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Thomas. I'm Gina Casa Grande with the Monroe YMCA as the executive director. And I feel very fortunate and humbled to be on this committee and help serve Monroe and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to invite Connie Gross to come on up and say, introduce yourself and say a few words about your interest in serving as well.
Thank you very much. I'm Connie Goss. I have lived here since 2001. I work in town at Research International. And I am active in the Monroe Arts Council as secretary on their board and I'm a member of the Historical Society as well. And I'm just honored to be recommended for this position.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the is under requested action two or a motion? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
To thank Connie and Gina for stepping up and serving on this body. And I've known Connie for a long time and she's volunteered for the Historical Society and I think we're very lucky to have her. And I would like to move to confirm the mayor's appointments of Gina Casa Grande to position three and Connie Goss to position four of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as tourism industry members with terms ending June 30, 2023.
Hanford seconds. I have a motion for requested action number two on new business 7.2, as shown on the screen from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Hanford. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes 6-0. Congratulations, Board Member Grande, Casa Grande, and congratulations, Board Member Vos. Welcome to the LTAC. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item then, which is requested action number three. And I turn again to Mr. Heebner. Mr. Heebner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick refresher. Board Member Galvin is being reappointed. She is the front desk manager for Evergreen Suites here in here in Monroe. She was appointed to the board for her first term last year. We met, as I mentioned, the mayor and myself. We met, as I mentioned, the mayor and myself met with Anita yesterday and she is very excited to be reappointed and is looking forward to continuing to represent the lodging industry on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. Pylund will be taking over as the staff liaison for the LTAC effective on Monday. And he will be continuing efforts to recruit for a second lodging industry member on that board. Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. And as noted earlier, Anita Galvin was not able to make this evening's meeting. And if you have any questions, I understand that council member Fulcher has been serving with her for the last year on LTAC. In the meantime, I would request council's confirmation respectfully of this reappointment. Go ahead, council member Fulcher.
I move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Anita Galvin to position one of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as a lodging business member with a term expiring six thirty, twenty twenty three.
I have a motion from council member Fulcher, a second from council member Scarborough for requested action number three and new business item seven point two. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go on now to item number eight. This is council member reports. We'll start off on the end with council member Scarborough. Go ahead.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Fisher, go ahead.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Council member Hanford, go ahead. Thank you. Council member Kenny, go ahead.
You and I continue our weekly fun at Citizens Academy. I hope we didn't steal her thunder. Maybe she has something else to to share that she's been doing. But that's great fun. I think we have two more weeks and I think Saturday is our all day where we go, we have EVOC and the range. So it's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Fulcher, go ahead.
Yeah, she didn't steal my fun, my thunder because I did a ride along on Saturday night until Sunday morning very early and it was very exciting night in Monroe. So that was a big hoot. Got to go really fast. I love that part. Okay. And legally, not like when I drive. All right. Thank you.
All right, council member Fulcher, thank you. Council member Davis, go ahead.
Nothing to report.
Thankfully, council member Davis. All right, we're going to keep moving on. And Chief Jolly does have his his earpieces in, so he can't hear us right now. All right, I'm going to turn to staff and department reports with Mr. With Director Bailey. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member, members of the council. Just real quick, project highlight for this month is a, may not seem exciting, but I can tell you internally, it's very exciting. As we continue to digitize all of our remaining paper records, which include a lot of very large commercial building plans and more boxes than I want to admit that the planners have collected over the years. This is a project that's really been ongoing for a while. We were fortunate enough to get a grant with the assistance of the clerk's office as well as our public, public records officer to complete this project, which will have a lot of benefits to the city. One, as we look to temporarily relocate to another location while the campus project is going on. It's less things that we have to move. It also ties into the process that we've been doing to go to full electronic permitting. This enables us, enables us to access documents easily, which which makes the process for public records requests easier as well. So it's, it's something that we're really interested and excited to get completed. In addition, just a shout out for from for our staff, Victoria Forte had received her commercial building inspector certification. And Victoria has worked with us for less than a year and has 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 really been a valuable asset to to our building department. So I just want to give her a shout out. Also, we have also related to staff. I want to, in looking at our statistics for code enforcement, I can say as someone who's overseeing code enforcement at other communities, our current, our, our current stats are two hundred and eighty four of two hundred and two hundred and eighty four, two hundred and eighty five cases that we've opened this year have been resolved. And that's a pretty remarkable figure, also considering that we had a period this year where we, we did not have a code enforcement officer. So it's been a testament to all of staff that stepped in while the code enforcement officer position was vacant, as well as our new code enforcement officer, Kevin Price, who's who's doing a really good job. And with that, that completes my report.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Bailey. Are there any questions for Director Bailey this evening? All right. Really appreciate the report and all the work that you're doing and I hope that would be Deborah for the next item. Thank you very much. All right, turning to administrator Knight and go ahead.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. The council looking forward to the next two meetings. Just a reminder that next Tuesday's meeting is canceled in order to allow individuals to participate in election day. And on the November fifteenth, we will have a Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting and Finance Director Becky Hassert will be taking the finance committee through just a general discussion of municipal bonds. We've got two municipal bond projects scheduled for twenty twenty three. For the regular business meeting, Senator Brad Hawkins with the twelfth Legislative District will be visiting the city. So similar to our previous visits from Representatives Mike Steele and Keith Gaynor. And we will be hosting Senator Brad Hawkins as well. For the consent agenda, we have our regular accounts payable, payroll, meeting minutes. And then for business items, authorization of an interagency agreement between the City of Monroe and the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services with John Landy. A quitclaim deed for the Snohomish Health District Building. An ILA with Snohomish County for the US two Shared Path Project, on-call contracts. And then adoption of strategic priorities plan and then digitizing the contract, a digitizing contract and then street tree planting contract. So a number of contracts that we're trying to finalize before the end of the year. For final action, then we have all of those items that came to council for first reading at the last business meeting. And those include the ordinance setting property, the property tax levy, second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the budget. Second reading and adoption of the six-year capital facilities plan. Under new business, we have the year-end fee resolution update. That's an annual housekeeping item to update our fees for twenty twenty three. Proposed amendments to council rules of procedure that are moving forward from the council legislative committee. Ordinance for municipal code chapter twenty three for dedication of easements of public right of way. And then Snohomish County Public Safety Coalition. So under reports, then we have parks, public works, economic development and human services. Any questions? The last item that we have is a question for the city council for a public hearing. That's not listed currently on the extended agenda and this was a item that the city council had discussed at the September twentieth meeting and that was the meeting where both Mayor Thomas and I were absent from that meeting. So we weren't there for the discussion. And this was on the UDR definitions. We had tentatively planned to bring those UDR definitions back for the public hearing on November fifteenth. And we have some options for council to consider and we're looking for some direction this evening. So the first option, of course, would be to go ahead and hold that public hearing as scheduled and take public comment and then consider input from the public prior to first reading. The section, second option would be to take the UDR definitions. There's about six hundred of them total. And move those on to the P three committee for review and recommendation to the full council. So that would be taking them to committee first for review and recommendation. And then finally, the third option is to bring the definitions back to a study session for further discussion by the council and direction before moving on. So looking for some input and some feedback from council for that November fifteenth.
Council have any, any preference on bringing that forward for public hearing in consideration for first reading? Or the other options that were brought up? Council member Kenny, go ahead.
As Chair of the P three committee, we would be happy, I think I speak for Kyle and Ed also in saying that we would be happy to review that first and then bring back recommendations to council, maybe to save council time.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Fulcher. Go ahead.
I think that this is something we could just go ahead and put straight to council, actually, because this is this, we've reviewed this a few times in these emergency extensions. What I would like to see is that we just get it on to the, the public hearing and we allow then for the I know there are some builders that have some questions about it and that would give them the chance, if we could get this done before the end of the year, that'd be fantastic.
Okay, thank you. So I've got a suggestion from council member Kenny that this go to committee. I've got a suggestion that this go to public hearing. I know the planning commission's been working on this for a couple of years. There are about six hundred some odd definitions. That could take some time to go through committee. I know the planning commissions worked on it. You also have a couple of weeks before the, the hearing. If you wanted to review it and had any questions, you could certainly follow up with staff. And you could also, as council member Fulcher suggested, you'd have the opportunity, if you had a hearing on the fifteenth, to receive comments and consider incorporating those comments into changes to the ordinance, if you like. Council member Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you give a little more background for those of us that can't quite remember the meeting on September twentieth?
Yeah, I reviewed the, the video and on September twentieth, council member Fulcher just expressed. And I don't want to put words in her mouth, but my recollection was she expressed in interest in going over the definitions. There and and doing, quote, a deep dive is the term that was used by a couple of council members. You, council member Hanford, and I think another council member, I think it was council member Fisher concurred that you'd wanted to spend some more time going over the definitions. The acting mayor pro tem that evening made the statement, okay, it's decided we'll go with a deep dive. As I was looking over it with staff last week and as administrator Knight was doing the same thing. We acknowledged that it, that there had been a lot of process already with the planning commission and we just wanted to knowing that there are other items on the agenda for next year, like the comprehensive plan and that this was putting together definitions to implement our current comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty fifteen. We, we thought that we'd come back and check with the council one more time before putting that very large volume of work into committee or bringing it to a multiple study sessions of the council. So as I was talking to staff about it, I, what I understood was a couple or a few years ago, there was an interest from the planning commission to, to be more to, to include more definitions. And that's how we ended up with so many definitions that's that are being brought forward. One of the things that the staff talked to me about, we spent some time talking about this, was that you'll be adopting a new comprehensive plan over the next year or two. That'll be an opportunity for you to look at those definitions and maybe revisit and give direction to the planning commission that maybe six or seven hundred definitions is a bit much and for implementing the next comprehensive plan when it gets updated. That maybe looking at streamlining the number of definitions would be preferred over the, the number that have come forward. But again, we, from staff and mayor perspective, we just want to, to be there to share that this has been through your planning commission. It's received a lot of comments and we didn't want that, you know, sharing that information to go unsaid. As we're looking at considering doing a public hearing. And as council member Fulcher said, if somebody wants to come forward and provide comment, if if any of you who've already seen the definitions have any comments or questions, we'd be happy to answer them and you, you'd still as a body be able to make amendments to those following the public hearing process. So anyway, just want to make certain you heard the planning commission's voice, since I'm not certain that that was all shared back in September. Thank you. You still have the floor.
I appreciate that. So for a point of clarification, are you saying, are you saying that you would like this to go to the committee or are you, you're just saying you're welcome to?
Yes, that was, the point is if that needs to be vetted, we're happy to do that work. But it sounds as though it's been vetted.
It has been vetted thoroughly, but at the same time, we, in the executive branch, honor the legislative branch. This is your choice. And if, if the council truly wants to spend time going through those definitions, it's gonna, it's gonna move other work around. But we, we, we also heard what you said in the, in the, in the audio and the video and for us to to not share this information would be doing a disservice to the planning commission. And we just, we just felt it was necessary to share more info. So council member Hanford, you still have the floor?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd love to hear from other council members. It sounds like from what you're telling me from the twentieth that we were wanting as a council to go through it. So unless there's other differences of opinion to be expressed, I would support council members to just bring it right to us.
To a public hearing and first reading and then see where it goes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll turn to other council members then. Council member Davis, go ahead.
Sure, I think I agree. I think it's been vetted pretty well. And I think the other thing is we have that opportunity next year to go over and make any corrections that we might find in this. It's a large body work and if we can just, just bring it forward like council member Fulcher said and move this forward instead of extending it any further. So I'm for what? Okay.
So I'm hearing a consensus that it's okay to bring this forward to public caring for consideration for first reading. As early as the fifteenth, which is what I think the public notice will allow for and in the course of receiving public testimony, just like when the planning commission reviewed it, if for some reason something comes up, staff and I will be prepared to make adjustments or amendments to the planning commission's recommendation. And I thank you all very much for, for listening on this and and your thoughts on this this evening. So we'll, we'll add that to the extended agenda for the fifteenth. If I have my dates right.
Yes, you do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, city administrator report and thanks again, everybody.
I'm waiting for the slides so I can remember. I could probably do them by memory.
I'm always concerned. Did I, was I supposed to say something here?
The pregnant pause.
Yes.
Just a couple of reminders that on Tuesday, November eighth, the chamber is hosting our twelfth legislative district representative. So if you have an opportunity to attend, you can register and pay for that online. And we could get a second opportunity to share our legislative priorities with our new legislators from the twelfth. On Thursday, the seventeenth, I've said this a couple of times, but I will just remind everybody again that the chamber is hosting its mega mixer. This is a big deal to have the mega mixer here in Monroe. Both of those events will be had, held at the Monroe School Admin Building. Looking then just forward to sharing some kudos and some really great work that's been happening within the city walls. First, kudos to our building inspector, Victoria Forte. She passed her ICC Commercial Building Inspector Certification. So that's a big deal for her. It took a lot of effort and a lot of study in order to pass that test and we're very proud of the work that she's done. And it brings another commercial inspector into the city, which is helpful for the amount of work that we've got going right now in the commercial sector. For another kudos for our water sewer operations manager, John Landy. He was certified by the Washington State Department of Health as a water distribution manager three. So again, effort that took some time to complete and we're proud of John and his work. And then finally, permit supervisor Kim Shaw retired yesterday after thirty years with the city of Monroe. And she worked in a number of different departments as so many people have here within city hall. She started off in the finance department, utility billing, and then moved on and did some accounts payable, moved over to building and then finally into planning where she retired from the city. So just sorry to see her go, but happy that she gets an opportunity to move on to the next chapter in her life. But she did a really beautiful post. I think on social media yesterday, just talking about how much she enjoyed and appreciated her time working for the city. So wanted to recognize her as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's report. So very busy week last week. We had, I pull up my calendar here. Just, just for last week. In addition to interviewing people for boards and commissions, had, I went ahead and joined in with the Economic Development Advisory Board meeting. One of the things we talked about were some concerns that had been expressed related to diversity, equity and inclusion. There was some discussion around wanting to do some work to, within EDAB in support of diversity, equity and inclusion. And so just, just sharing with you that there were some concerns raised about some comments that had been received by a couple of people on EDAB. And I look forward to, to hearing more about what EDAB's recommendations are coming forward on that. I also spent a considerable amount of time, probably, probably about eight hours or so. With Jay Ray, who is the, which is the company that is doing our branding effort. I drove them around town and thanked my wife for, thank you Laura for letting me use your car. And so I, I drove him around town, drove him through a really good sampling of all the different neighborhoods that we have here in town. From the downtown area where Kyle and, and Heather lived. To the, you know, the Frylands, up to the newly annexed area, past in front of my house, past in front of Becky's house. And also took them through the industrial park, took them to the fairgrounds for probably about thirty to sixty minutes or so. Took them to the Historical Society for about an hour. Tried to take them into our two parks by the river, but it was windy that day and I, the, the mayor didn't get the message. The gates were closed. Because trees might fall on us, but they got a, a good sense from the boat launch of the proximity of the river. And brought them over to El Pericio for, for lunch. They had already been to a couple of restaurants in the downtown. And taking them there allowed them to see Lake Ty, showed them the synthetic turf, the, you know, the Veterans Memorial. At, at Lake Ty. Talked a lot about Imagine Monroe and about growth in the community. And I'm, oh, and then came back and met the senior leadership team. I'm really excited. Oh, they brought five people with them. And again, Laura, thank you for letting us use your car. And yeah, it was, it was just a really great day showing them around town. And letting them hear from our senior leadership team and a bunch of different folks. So we have a lot of really great things that when I'm taking people around, it's like, oh yeah, that happened, that happened, that happened. And that's all a result of the work that you've been doing as council members. So thank you for all of that. And then let me see, this week. This week, it's still early in the week, but just been doing some interviews around communications contract. With, with the company and again, more LTAC interviews that occurred yesterday. Thank you again for confirming those appointments. And then yesterday, we had a, something I hadn't seen before in any place I've ever worked. We had a lot of people from staff participating in the chili and chili cook-off and costume contest. Almost said chili costume cook-off. We don't want to cook the, cook the costumes. But the, the winning team for the best, for the, all the departments was, was the Community Development Department. They did a really great job of doing, doing, what was it again? Toy Story four. Yes, and I had never seen Toy Story four. Apparently there is some Canadian Evel Knievel. And Lance dressed as a Canadian Evel Knievel with a big, a big maple leaf on his back and his front. And Kate Galway dressed up as the dinosaur, the T-Rex, in one of those blow-up costumes. So that when she moved, it kind of did weird things. And the, the most creative costume from your group was two people. Who had Victoria and I forgot who was in the front, Amy, had dressed up like Slinky, Slinky Dog with a Slinky in between the two of them. Finance dressed up like the, the green, you were the Green Giant. Yeah, you got an award too. And everybody else dressed up like cans of beans, right? Yes. Yeah, asparagus. Oh, asparagus, yes. Great. Yeah, there are pictures. The, the executive team dressed up like Scooby Doo. So you, she had an, Deborah had an Ashcott and a white shirt, you know, blue shirt with a white.
Spread.
Spread. She was spread. Yeah. But I, I will tell you this, I've worked in a lot of different liberal governments and I've never seen the level of participation that I saw. The number of chilies, there were fourteen things of chili and I was part of the, the judging for the chili. We've got some awesome cooks here. There were probably a half dozen roughly cornbreads. And I would guesstimate somewhere around fifty to sixty people attended. I mean, I, I'm used to going to these things and, and, and maybe a couple of people dress up and maybe, maybe. Oh, maybe ten percent of the people actually show up to it. And this was just a really great. A really great showing of our staff and you, you all, you all should be really appreciative of the culture that you as elected leaders. Help to support here. It's, it's just, it's just a really great group of folks. And I feel truly blessed and appreciative of, of everybody. So thank you. Yeah, I think that's all I have to report today. All right, so with all that said, Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. Number one. Miss Spikoff, can we get on the invite list next year for the chili cook-off? I'll be dressed up.
Yes.
Definitely.
Same way. I'd like.
Love an invite. Yeah, that'd be great. Second thing, since next week's meeting is canceled and Veterans Day is November eleventh. I was just also wondering if you know of anything that's happening on.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. So there are two things I forgot. One, next week is, I think it's next week is Police and Fire Week. Is it next week or the week after? Okay, so I'm doing a proclamation for Police and Fire Week and we've got a, a little, we've, we've got a celebration that we do as part of that on the Friday of that week. Second, I will be putting a wreath out at, on Friday, November eleventh. At Lake Ty Field at the memorial. I'll probably be doing that sometime between seven and eight. And I'll, I'll send out an email to the council so that you're aware of when I'm doing that, if you'd like to join me. As usual, it'll be, you know, I'll just say a few words and, and, and put it out on a tripod, but thank you for reminding me of that. Forgot about that.
Early in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, I try to do that early in the morning so the people, when they pass by, they can see it and appreciate it for Veterans Day. Yes. Sometime between seven and eight, I'll send an email out to council. So if you could check your email, maybe Tuesday, Wednesday of that week. One of the reasons for the delay is that I, I need to see if the VFW wanted to, to be out there as well, because they, they put up flags around town. And if they do want to be there, I want to take that into consideration, but I, I will try to get it done by eight o'clock. Okay. I do see a couple of other lights. Anything else, Councilmember Hanford?
That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I just wanted to let everyone know that November tenth, I believe it's Thursday at approximately ten AM. Park Place Middle School is having a Veterans Day Assembly and Councilmember Davis and is speaking. And Councilmember Scarborough will be in attendance for veteran recognition. Just wanted to let, let everyone know that and really happy they're participating. They were asked to participate and agreed. And also wanted to wish Rich Hebner a wonderful new career chapter. And we will miss you and thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. We'll miss you. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Rich, you were last on my list. When the light started going off, I, I knew there was something else I was going to say. I've really appreciated the time working with you, both here at the city and also at Snohomish County. I'm going to miss working with you. And I am really excited about your opportunity to go to Moses Lake and work as a deputy city manager. So that's, I know that that's something that really interests you. And while, while I've said to people, I, I never want to lose folks here. It's always good that when we do lose people, it's so that they can move on to something that is more. That, that is something more than what we can offer them here. And, and that's what they're doing. So congratulations and we will miss you. And on that note, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you.